All right. Okay, I will call the planning board meeting to order. And welcome the zoning board with us tonight and I'll start off with a roll call of a planning board and if you will. Say your name or say yes or here on the video as well. So because I'm not very good at doing both at the same time. Raise your hand. Misha.
Yeah.
Amy.
Here.
Tori.
Here.
Jim.
Here.
Taya. And she's going to be absent. John Jonathan.
Here.
Jesse.
Here.
Shannon. Well, we know you're here. We can see you and Stacy. Okay. Um, you're all you all received the copy of the planning board minutes from the last two meetings. So do you have a motion to approve the minutes from somebody?
I would.
Do you approve both of them?
Yeah.
He was he was at both meetings.
So so it's okay.
Yes.
Okay. Um, is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Um, is there any discussion? Any corrections, anything? Okay, then, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same thing. Minutes are passed. And now I will turn it over to the zoning mission.
Thanks Stacy. Um, this is Jim Burd, Chair of the Zoning Commission. Uh, like to call the zoning commission to uh, order, um, and first we'll do a roll call. So um, let's go Michael Wojcik.
Here.
Michael Chels.
Here.
Uh, Deborah Monahan.
She must on there.
She's on Zoom, I believe.
Yes, Deborah.
Yes. Thank you. And Wendy Weaver is absent.
Okay.
So that is that, um, Jennifer sent around minutes from the
June 13th, 2023 zoning commission meeting.
Um, have you had a chance to look those over? Are there any uh, corrections or additions to the minutes, you know?
Well, one clarification, you said July or June?
June 12.
It says June and it says Ju- July on the agenda. So you meant June.
Well, well, yeah, June 13th, it was the the PUD public hearing. And I believe four or five of you were there. So.
I was asked, yes. All right. So thank you.
I, yeah, sorry about that.
Um, so has anybody seen any errors in the in the miss? It's the missing, I was deleting my mess, so I can't comment. I don't even say much. So if there are no corrections, uh, can I have somebody move to approve the minutes? I'll make a motion to approve the mess from June 13th running you.
I'll second that.
All right, thank you. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 Deborah. Can you hear us?
We need her to be informed for the her new phone icon. Anybody give her a phone call?
I can text her.
Or text her.
Well, I think we have.
We have two, but you can't vote because you weren't there. So, yeah, we need Deborah. And and she's
connecting. It says it looks like she's connecting. Oh, she's been okay for a while. And she reached through her chat? Something's happening.
Hi there. Hi. Sorry, I had some technical issues.
Hi Deborah, this is Jim Burd. Um, say, we have a a motion on the floor to approve the minutes from the June 13th zoning commission meeting. I don't know if you heard that, but we did ask if there was any uh, corrections to the minutes. And I don't know, do you, do you, do you know of anything that might be fixed?
Uh, no, they looked okay to me.
Okay, so we also have a, well, we have a motion to approve the minutes then. It's been, the motion is made and seconded. And, um, we voted to approve and so we're asking for your vote on approval of the minutes.
I approve.
All right. That settles it. Our motion and approval. So, all right. So the minutes have been approved. Thank you.
Good. So then does it go back to to the planning or how does it's general public comments? Do I ask for any general public comments or?
Sure. Do you want to be the general?
Yeah.
My name is Grant Gager. I'm the city manager. Uh, you know, typically in a joint meeting like this, in my experience, um, we might designate a presiding officer for the meeting for the duration of the year, just now that we've, especially now that we've passed all voting items there. So, um, you know, I I don't know if that's a step you folks want to take or if you want to alternate items. So I'm just a member of the public office.
Nicely done.
I don't mind just emceeing whatever for the remainder of the short meeting. Okay. Um, so are there any general public comments? Do we have anybody from the public? No. You don't want to say anything?
No. Just kind of watch.
Okay. All right. Um, anything online?
Yep.
These are the only people. All right, then I guess the public comments period is closed. On a new business. Who have with us today, presentation by the downtown master plan consultants, Andy and
Scott, but Andy's doing all the
Okay.
Sorry, you gotta listen to me.
Okay.
There's a way to full screen that I think you can like play around.
I just need to make sure they can see it. Sometimes we've had that. That's some, that's PDF. I think you're on.
Can folks on Zoom still see the share screen?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. Is that good?
Yeah, that's great. I'll see if this, yeah, everything works. Um, thank you so much for for having both Scott and I, even though Scott said he's not going to be talking. Um, we still appreciate you making the time. Um, it's it's always super valuable in a process like this to get like the boards together to get community members, um, coordinating and communicating to each other as much as possible. So, um, I'm Andy Rutz with Crescendo Planning and Design. We have the good fortune of helping the city, um, as the lead consultant on the downtown master plan. Um, Scott Randall, who's here today, but is going to stay quiet apparently, um, is with Robert Petchin Associates, um, a Montana-based, uh, civil engineering transportation planning firm. Um, and then we're also on our team is, um, economic planning systems, helping out on the like economic development and housing study, um, in particular, which I'll touch on a little bit. We don't want to to like belabor the presentation too long. So I've got probably 20 slides or so to click through, but, um, what we want to do is like, take the time, take the opportunity to update you on the process to date. Um, we've had a couple like really engaged events the last couple of days. And so we scrambled a bit today to give you like some of the takeaways that we heard from community members and business owners. Um, this morning, yesterday evening and yesterday afternoon. Um, it is admittedly like just a quick snapshot of that stuff. But then, um, if it sounds like we don't have any members of the public tuning in, but if somebody watches the recording before tomorrow, um, we have a community open house tomorrow night at the Sheen Center from five to seven, and, um, there's going to be a bunch of activities to continue to gather input, but then also an opportunity to kind of reflect back um, a little bit more of what we've heard from folks so far. So, uh, without further ado.
What I do.
It's not your fault. There it is. Okay. Um, so in this process, we are really fortunate that, um, the the city has a very recently adopted uh, growth policy, um, and then a number of other plans that are fairly recent, things like the Trails and Act of Transportation Plan. So we've got really good citywide vision and policy to build off of, which is a real advantage for our process because we don't have to like reinvent the wheel. We can have a really focused conversation with community about what in those documents and what in the adopted policy is really particularly applicable to downtown and how the downtown wants to grow and evolve in the next 15 to 20 years. Um, as you know, having like spent a lot of time working with the growth policy, um, this is, this process is a direct result of, um, one of the strategies, um, in the growth policy. So the strategy to explore creating downtown master plan. And and I think this is an important nuance, uh, aligning it really strategically with the urban renewal, uh, district. And what that lets us do in this process is both provide guidance on recommendations, but then really tee them up to leverage potential like investment or funding from the Urban Renewal Authority as well, uh, which is just can help like lighten the ass and lighten the load, um, on the city in trying to to make some of these, uh, bigger ideas that the community has implementable. Um, if you're not familiar with the study area yet, what you see on the screen is it's effectively, as I was mentioning, the boundary that aligns with the urban renewal district, the only portion, and I can't use a laser pointer, but, um, if you see the purple rectangle on the east side, thank you, Jen, um, that's the only area within our study area that's not part of the Urban Renewal Authority boundary. Uh, but part of that was to be contiguous with other districts, uh, within the downtown study area. And so the scope extends really importantly, all the way down to the river, includes Socky Way Park, um, and then does include a little bit of property north of the train tracks. Uh, it doesn't get all the way to the Gateway Museum, but it's it's about a half block off of that. Just to give you kind of where we are in the process, we're still relatively early. Um, this is really the first like really robust kind of wide open public input, and I'll touch a little bit on the engagement we've done so far. But, um, we're very much at the stage of still like building on the vision elements. We've heard, um, asking the community to roll up their sleeves and start marking up maps for us. We can like make that more informed by a lot of the analysis we've done. Um, and so this, this is kind of like the, I don't know, like high point of really public engagement events. We'll continue engaging the public online, in person, kind of throughout the process. Um, and there'll be another big push probably late January, early February. In terms of the scope of what's in the plan, um, and I do want to touch on, you know, how the plan then, you know, affects kind of decision-making for planning board and zoning commission, um, city commission. But what the the scope of the master plan includes is what we call planned framework recommendations. So those are things that touch more at like a policy level on land use, mobility, like what kind of connections does the community want to see in and around downtown? What kind of uses uh, would the community like to see the city encourage? Uh, how do we better connect to parks and public spaces that exist? Or how do we create more of those? There's a very specific deliverable in that, um, we were asked to do a streetscape improvements plan. And that looks more at the physical infrastructure of the streets within that downtown study area. A component of that will be a wayfinding plan. So how do we help orient both locals and visitors, um, to a lot of the assets that already exist in and around the downtown and help them get there more intuitively? Um, I had teased that we've got a dedicated, um, team member focused on the economic development strategy. That's always a huge part of a downtown is how do you ensure that the the local business community has a really, um, robust and vital path forward? Um, we have a housing and parking study as a part of our scope. And so that's really kind of at its core, an assessment of what the demand is, um, citywide, what the demand could be, uh, in the downtown. And then where are there opportunities to meet that demand with with new supply or reposition the supply that already exists? And then importantly, how does that affect parking in and around downtown? And every downtown plan that I've had the opportunity to work on, parking is like amongst the hottest topic, um, if not the hottest topic. And then, um, I think what sets a plan like this apart hopefully is that it's it's intended to have a really strategic implementation action plan. So it's not just a catalog of all the ideas, but it's a, here's the ideas the community had. Here's the ones that the community prioritized. And here's how we can get to go on those in the short term, medium term, long term. Um, and that includes parenting with funding opportunities, um, and kind of partnerships that need to be forged. So how does that apply like to to you all in particular? We talked about, um, kind of the citywide policy documents, the growth policy, things like the Trails and Act of Transportation Plan, and those directly led to uh, this downtown master plan effort. What you see on the kind of lower right-hand part of the screen then is the piece of the downtown master plan that really should move this forward is that implementation action plan. Those tend to be matrices, um, just because it kind of gives folks a snapshot of what is the project? What is the timeline? Give us an order of magnitude cost. Who do we need to involve? If we can get more creative and not have it in a matrix, I'm all for it. Um, but what that then leads to on the lower left-hand corner is this plan will provide recommendations for things like potential regulatory changes. So we know that there's an upcoming zoning code update. Um, this plan should be able to give you all, um, better information about the types of zoning code changes that would be beneficial specifically for the downtown to get to that more built environment vision, um, that the community expresses. A lot of times it includes things like capital improvement investments. Um, so if there is a desire to really make some change in the built environment, this plan will provide some direction on here's the type of funding that would be required. And here's a bunch of pathways to get to that type of funding. Um, and then the other thing it does that, um, I feel like sometimes isn't just intuitive to folks. It gives city staff a work program a lot of times. Um, and so it's what are the kind of programs could the city use to help manage things like partner parking to help supplement maintenance? And that's not to say it puts it all on the city's docket, but it's a, how do we move this stuff forward? And again, what other partners might we be able to leverage to kind of ease the burden on the city staff side of things? You can just like tap. Get it perfect. So, um, in terms of engagement, then, uh, we've we've really tried to to reach people through a variety of different methods so far. Um, I've gotten to speak to a number of you, some in person, some over Zoom. Um, we've been doing a lot of stakeholder interviews, like I said, with that mix of in-person and online, trying to meet folks kind of where or when is convenient to them. We had a booth at the farmer's market where we were trying to pull folks away from the reason that they came and talk to us about the downtown plan, um, admittedly to varying degrees of success. Uh, we've had a few of these more formal presentations, uh, with city commission with URA board, um, excited, like I said, to get in front of you all. We had a really, really good turnout for, uh, online vision survey that we did. Um, and one thing I don't think I've said publicly yet is that because that was so successful, it's likely that we try to use something like that again to continue to get input. Um, and maybe it's to build on the inputs that we get in this kind of round of engagement to say if you weren't able to join us on these three days at these set times, like do it over an evening, uh, with a glass of wine if you want. Um, but we got about 400 folks who responded and most of those were Livingston residents. That's a really important kind of focus that we get a lot of folks from this community to weigh in, but it's also really important in a downtown plan to get voices that are visitors to the downtown or county residents who the downtown is really that gathering place for the broader community. Um, so we want to know what what those folks' vision is and how the downtown impacts them. And then lastly, we've got a form on our our webpage. Um, the webpage is downtownlivingston.org backslash plan. And it's a share your ideas interface. I would like encourage and ask you to spread the word on that. Um, I think the nice part with that format.
Do you want to go there?
You don't have to, but I I think the nice part with the format is that, um, really any kind of idea that strikes your fancy, there's a a way to kind of categorize it and it's open-ended and you can throw the ideas in there and we get notified right away and we can add that into the the conversation that the community has had. In terms of some of the vision themes that we've heard so far, um, we had asked folks to give us one word, which is a hard exercise to do about what your vision is, but it sort of inherently asks folks to prioritize. Um, you have to figure out what is the one thing I want to say. And this was really consistent with growth policy feedback in that community was kind of top line. Um, folks in Livingston obviously have a huge appreciation for that and we don't want to see that lost as, um, as we move forward into the future. But a lot of really good input on like the historic charm and character, how we can maintain and preserve that. How do we help the local businesses become more and more vibrant and accessible to folks? And then all of the feedback we've gotten so far, we're we're starting to put together vision themes is kind of the jargon term we use, but how do we succinctly say you know, everything that the community is telling us? And I would say these are kind of the top four at the moment. Um, there's absolutely room for more to enter the conversation, but, um, one is certainly how do we diversify the mix of uses downtown? And I think the the note I've been making is that it's important, an important distinction that a lot of folks want to make sure that we serve Livingston locals first and foremost. But then we say like, you're absolutely welcome to come and visit and spend your money, um, and help our local economy. Uh, the next one is how do we take all the great assets that Livingston already has and make the connections to the stronger? And in some cases, those are physical connections. And we'll talk a little bit about that in a few minutes. Um, in other cases, it's how do you like make the kind of more ethereal or emotional connection? Um, so how do we engage the history of the rail? How do we make the connection more explicit to the river, uh, again, like physically and sort of emotionally? And then how do you strengthen the gateway relationship that the city has had with the national park historically? Uh, the next one is, uh, an emphasis on trying to right-size the parking and how do we get that parking supply right so that it serves the local business need? And then allows for the downtown to evolve should any new kind of uses or development come along? And then the last one is acknowledging that Livingston already has a really unique and robust arts and culture, um, kind of heritage. How do we continue to build on that and set Livingston apart from all the rest of its peers? So this week I mentioned, we've been we've been kind of clustering a bunch of events back to back to back, um, with the hope that if folks can't attend to all of them, um, they can at least like hop in for one or two of these. We had a strategy workshop with URA, which, uh, there was a short presentation for that, but it was really intended to be kind of a a work session and brainstorming session with that board to help identify what are some things that like they may be interested in helping, um, to invest in or help implement coming out of the plan, knowing that the URA can be a really strong partner in a downtown master plan. Last night, and that's picture on the screen, um, we had a community workshop charrette. We had about 45 folks, um, who were kind enough to spend two hours with us. Jen said it may was more.
I think we had more of this.
Okay.
Sign in.
Um, and yeah, folks spent two hours with us. We had a bunch of like hands-on exercises and I'll recap those a little bit in a minute. And then this morning we had a business center breakfast over at the Beanery and had 35 business owners show up hopefully before they had to open up shop for the day. It was like seven to eight thirty, really lively and and honestly helpful for our team conversation, um, about what would help help the business owners. So I wanted to give you all a quick snapshot of like what are the priorities we're hearing so far? And, um, one of the exercises we had at the workshop, also at the business center breakfast, and we'll have it again at the open house tomorrow, is sort of visual preference exercise. And it had for each of these kind of categories, this one being land use and activation. It had kind of the eight most consistent ideas we've heard up to basically Tuesday morning. Um, and we asked folks if you could select up to four, if you if you could only prioritize four of those, what would they be? Um, and this is a snapshot, at least in this activity of of the the top four responses, um, an interest in outdoor dining, a lot of interest in conversions of upper stories into residential uses, um, a lot of, a lot of ask for a local convenience store. Um, I think the quote, one of them was like underwear and socks. That's what we need. Um, and then, um, a a strong interest in how do we make the alleys like less just utilitarian? How do we activate those in some way? It doesn't have to be all all days, all seasons, but, um, maybe around key events. Next category was alt arts, culture and amenities. Um, out of this group, we heard a lot of support for historical storytelling. How do we really lean into the rich history that Livingston has and and kind of celebrate that and tell folks about it? Um, a lot of interest in temporary closures for events. And we got some like geographic specific input on that in some of the exercises, how to be again, take some spaces in the downtown that might be inactive today and at least like give them a jolt for for a day or two or a weekend. Um, and then a lot of interest in like a curated art walk that gets you to the park. Um, and I don't know that the art component of it necessarily is the thing that resonates the most, but I think it was more the spirit of how do we get people to know that we have this treasure just south of downtown and it's only a few blocks away, um, if you're interested in wandering. On the streetscape mobility side, a lot of interest in multi-use trails. Um, I think there was a lot of discussion just generally about how do we provide really clear pathways or connections for non-motorized users? And that can take a lot of different forms. Um, a lot of desire for for street trees. I'd say greenery in general. Uh, this also mimics some inputs we got on the amenities side of just like an ask for shade in the downtown. And then, uh, interestingly, and I know there's a long history of conversations about bulbouts and curb extensions at the intersections. One, there were, there were two inputs on here. We've heard from some folks. They they have a lot of interest in temporary curb extensions or bulbouts, maybe something that's seasonal, like planters that help to find the space. And then another option was permanent ones. And I think we had like three responses on temporary and there were, you know, 18 or something on permanent bulbouts, which was quite honestly a surprise. So I'm interested to see like how that conversation continues. Uh, and then on the parks, open space improvements. Uh, a lot of interest in pocket parks, which I think kind of mimics that desire for shade and, um, temporary activation of spaces that maybe are inactive today. A lot of interest in like nature play opportunities. So what are, you know, kind of non-traditional playgrounds where you can send the kids out to hopefully not get hurt, but to take some chances and build some courage. Um, wayfinding signage. And I I think a piece of that that we've talked quite a bit about so far is rather than telling folks you're a half mile away from this destination or you're one or two miles. Celebrate those wayfinding opportunities to say you're a two-minute walk or a five-minute bike or something that just seems more human and maybe a little more enticing. And then a lot of interest in just finding a way to activate the edge, um, along the river. So we've already got great park amenities, um, civic center, other good uses down there. How do you get some folks, um, enjoying and engaging nature along the river? As I mentioned at the charrette last night, um, this, these are a few snapshots. This was sort of the the scene was a lot of folks huddled around maps, markers in hand, posters, dots. Um, I have to give some kudos to the group that showed up last night. There were remarkably self-led conversations happening. A lot of times our role in an in an exercise or a charrette like this is to sit with the table and sort of like prompt and leave the questions. And kudos to the residents last night. They were sleeves rolled up, um, having, you know, tough trade-off conversations and getting excited about like asserting their opinions and in hearing counteropinions from some of their, um, their their fellow residents. So as I mentioned, I wanted to just give you a snapshot of some of the input that we heard, um, hopefully so that this sort of seeds ideas in your mind and honestly, you can like hold our team to account as we go through this process to say, hey, you told us this is what the community was interested in. Show us where it shows up in the plan, um, or tell us why it's not there anymore. And so, um, on the land use and activation side of things. And and these are gleaned from, like I said, dots, posted notes, marked up maps. There was a lot of interest, um, in the pocket park and kind of plaza idea in general, but I think it really showed up most prevalently along parking lots, like kind of right down the spine on Main Street. How do we get some of those places to be active, um, in a way that doesn't How do we get some of those places to be active um, in a way that doesn't rely on like a business to be open to do so? Uh, there's a lot of interest in expanding some of the shops and restaurants toward the river. So how do we get the momentum on Main, Second B? Uh, to pull south a little bit more, probably especially for a visitation. And then a really good amount of interest in residential infill. I will say not with like a clear pattern, um, but a lot of interest of how could you find some opportunities for housing in and around the study area? Next exercise was around, I think it's a good one. Yeah. Next exercise is around circulation mobility. And so we had asked folks on this one, talk to us about kind of the places you want to get to, the types of destinations. Um, the types of gateways you want to use to pull people into the downtown or into the adjacent neighborhoods. And then we'll use the process to help figure out what the, the type of connection, what type of connection is right. Um, so blue dots were gateways and. A lot of desire for gateways along Park Street. Um, so as folks are, you know, coming into town, how do we get them to know to? Turn right um, and get, get down towards the river. Um, a lot of. Uh, feedback on how do we get highway users? Who may be going to the park to know that they should come in and stop in Livingston first. Um. Interestingly, geyser and park as a gateway intersection showed up a lot, um, and geyser generally as a. A good kind of east-west connection through town, um, and then. Gateways to in, into and from Sacagawea Park. Stronger connections to the park, I think was another big point of in, of interest and emphasis. And then how do we create better access to the north side of town? Uh, which is obviously like a challenging problem to, to figure out with the rail. There is a pretty significant barrier, but uh. Definitely heard loud and clear from folks that. That is a, a huge even psychological barrier, if not, you know, physical or time barrier to get, get folks to just kind of casually meander downtown. Since parking's been such a big topic of conversation and understandably so, one of the exercises we talked about was um, how do you manage parking? There's a lot of different ways to do that, um, and the, a lot of different tools to do that. Um, and what we asked folks in this exercise was. Take a look at the land uses in downtown. So that was a lot of the colors on the map, um, over top of an aerial. And then tell us where you'd like to see maybe some spaces that have higher or more frequent turnover. So instead of two-hour spaces. They could be an hour, they could be thirty minutes, they could be fifteen minutes, um, so that those spaces remain available and open for visitation. And then where are there some space needs that need to be longer than two hours? Um, we've heard quite a bit about like salon stops and day spa stops and. You want to go, but a two-hour time limit doesn't support that. Um, so we were asking for folks to like. Really give us specific geographic guidance on this. And then also asked of all the places that you park in downtown. Where are the ones that you have trouble regularly finding a space? Um, and so what, what we heard in this was lack of available parking on Main. Um, a desire for higher overturn, higher turnover spaces along Main, um, which it isn't surprised that those two are linked. Uh, and then a longer-term parking desire, especially over by the depot. And then in the parking lots, um, kind of in the core, and some of those parking lots are admittedly private parking lots. Uh, but we wanted to hear the interest in. Using those physical spaces for longer-term stays because there are always opportunities um, to get creative and have partnerships and, and kind of lease opportunities. And then lastly, we talked a lot about arts, amenities and events. Um. Asked folks to put green dots where they'd like to see public art or more public art. Um, I do think this. Oftentimes is tied to that gateway idea and we saw a lot of those patterns in the feedback we got that. There's a, a lot of interest in using public art as an opportunity to sort of announce that you've made it to Livingston. So. Kind of the west entrance of Park Street over by Seventh, um, how do we, you know, get creative at the main and park intersection to, you know, pull some energy? Down Main Street and then how do we get um, folks like toward the river and along the river frontage? Lots of interest in opportunities for temporary closures and events. Uh, those weren't kind of geographic specific. They were all over the place. Um, and then. We asked folks, what are some of the assets that need to be promoted better? So both for locals and out-of-towners and the depot and the Gateway Museum were kind of the most frequent of those responses. And then this morning I mentioned, we had a really engaged group of local business owners, um, and the exercise that we really focused on them was what we call a SWAT, but it's. Asking them to articulate where are the strengths as business owners that they see in the downtown? What are the weaknesses they encounter? What opportunities could they envision? And then what are the things that like threaten all of that potential? And so on the strength side. A lot of um, reiterating the kind of the historic iconic local and unique flavor of downtown Livingston and the fact that. It's a great place to have a business because there are other great businesses and there are other great destinations. On the weakness side, um, I think there was some frustration or concern about some of the ground floor uses that are just sort of inherently inactive. Um, that, that don't bring a lot of visits. Um. There was a lot of concern about the parking and are we using it efficiently? Um, and that can take a lot of different forms. But then the, the biggest part of the conversation honestly was just the strain on the workforce and that so many business owners. Would like to be open longer or would like to be open more days, but they are just having a heck of a time finding folks to, to, to serve. Um, patrons or potential patrons. On the opportunity side then, um, and a lot of times the weaknesses and opportunities sort of parallel each other, uh. There was a lot of desire to like, how do we optimize the parking? So how do we use some of those parking management strategies um, to align the needs of the downtown a little better? One that's, that's kind of heartwarming I thought was a lot of business owners saying like. Hey, it would be great if you would cross-promote our business and tell people that if you're coming to get. You know, a certain um, experience in downtown, there's a similar experience across the street or a block away. Um, and that's. That's another kind of co-benefit of a process like this is to ca- catalyze those relationships a bit. There was a lot of interest in mixy spaces and that also extends over seasons. So it was the idea of how could you be? You know, a coffee shop in the morning, um, how could you be a restaurant in the evening? How could you be a certain type of business in the? Winter, spring, but in summer, fall, it turns over to something else. Um, and then how can we like capture the momentum and uh? The folks like running along the I ninety quarter and get them to visit downtown. On the threat side then, and it's, it's a bummer to like end on threats, but um. The lack of workforce was like notably a dire concern from folks. Um, and. I'd say these three bullets, they're, they're sort of a inextricably linked cycle, right? Um, the reason there's a lack of workforce largely is because there's a housing shortage. And the reason it's in, it's not affordable is because there's a, a lack of housing supply, right? And that just sort of continues to feed itself. So. I know there's some concurrent efforts with like Park County Housing Coalition. I think that, that's great timing for our plan to see kind of. Momentum and enthusiasm in the community on efforts like that that can, you know, sort of reverse influence each other with this process. And then lastly, I'll say, um, just to make the plug for next steps, again, tomorrow evening, we've got this open house at the Shane Center. From five to seven, um, unlike the workshop charrette, it's the type of format is not one that like. Hopes that you're there for two hours. If you got five minutes, two minutes, if you want to come for two hours, you're welcome, but. It'll be a lot less formal. Uh, we'll keep engaging stakeholders. We'll be doing that in kind of focus group settings as well. Everything we hear this week will post um, up on the website. Uh, we'll both do like a summary of that, but then also just kind of give the raw results so that. People can, can kind of see all the nuance in detail. And then um, as I mentioned, kind of late January, early February, before we get into recommendations, and I think that's an important point to make is that. We still want to be vetting kind of concepts and alternatives with the community at that point before we. Start writing the more like technical recommendation piece of the plan, but um, that'll be kind of the next big, big engagement push. Talked a lot longer than I promised.
I think once you post that, I will also send around to you guys the link again to the, the downtown plan website and then can we get a? Copy of this presentation sent? Well, we'll put it up on our stuff too, but also do.
Um, just having done, been there last night, I will say that there, there wasn't enough time.
That is.
That, that fifteen minutes on every one of those topics was not nearly enough.
Yep.
So it kind of skews a little bit in my mind, your outcome, because you were just kind of getting into understanding what. The subgroup was that you were talking about and then it was time to go to the next one.
Yeah, no, that's really helpful feedback. Do you, I mean, do you think? If we, if we offered like a online sort of mirror of that, do you think that is helpful to say like, take the time? So this, I will say the disadvantage is. Then it's a in, in individual input, whereas I think a lot of the value we got last night was the kind of cross-collaboration. Um, but it would absolutely give folks all the time they want.
You could certainly try it if you wanted. I think the value last night was really, I sat at a table of people that I didn't have, didn't know completely. So. You know, the value was that you were, you were interacting with, with. Strangers.
Yeah.
And that was great because you got different feedback, but, but it was also hard because.
Yeah.
They were different levels of understanding where the city was and where you were on the map and you're going, well, where are we? And just about the time you figure out where you were on the map, then it was time to go to the next one. So that's my feedback. Excellent exercise.
Thanks.
And definitely made you think about.
Thanks.
In, in, in different ways. So that's excellent.
Thank you. Any other questions from folks? Any other ideas? Yeah.
Oh yeah, I, I, I was almost thinking that. Taking one of those things and do a little more extensive.
Yeah.
Uh, charrette. I agree. Yeah, we were just really getting excited and then. Had to go.
Yeah.
So we just didn't have enough time to actually put all the dots on that we wanted to either. So, you know.
Yeah. The hope, the hope is that since we, this is definitely how to end, like last night was the end of the conversation. It's, it's almost like a first cut, right? Here's. Here's a bunch of ideas we got. We can bring it back out and say like, all right, what did we miss? Because we didn't have time. Um. What do we need to add to this and, and kind of keep the, the cycle of feedback going? But I absolutely understand it's. I will admit it, it's challenging, um, setting the schedule for those and finding the like. Is two hours too big of an ask? Like what is the tipping point where then people just say like, I don't have time for that.
I've done it for three and people leave.
Yeah, me too, me too.
Well, when I came, I was thinking, oh God, it's too hard.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
But then once I started into it, it's like, yeah, let me go.
Thanks. That's like the best compliment.
Try maybe two and a half then.
Yeah.
Split down and split it down the middle or something.
That's great.
Lot of food for thought.
Thank you.
And there was food by the way.
And there was. And it was for that, yes, so.
Well, please, please do reach out like at any time, uh, you know, you are critical members of the, the community as well. So don't feel like you can't also share your ideas throughout the whole process.
No, please do share.
And that is what I was going to say too, is that. Because we ended and it was like, we were still talking. And you have that website there and so, you know, we just kept saying, well. Pass that on. Go, go to that website and take that idea and share it with them, you know, just. And that is really what you want, is a wide variety of feedback from different people.
Yeah.
Did I see some cards related to this effort that had the website and QR code?
Yes.
Cause I have them in my car.
I can go get them from the car.
Yeah, I'd love. I, I gripped them so I can pass them out.
And I have some in my office as well, so I can um. And get this out and those, those are not date-specific, so we did it that way so that it's basically the QR code on the back. So that if any of you want them, I can get them to you because I'd love for you to pass them out.
Yeah.
Um, and, and that's just kind of to get people coming to the website. So yeah, I can. Sorry, I need to get them.
And I also appreciated um, your suggestion, Jennifer, of. Sharing your email list if you belong to a different group or different um. Body of people to get a more, you know, even if you know some people that are in the county or, or whatever. That um, I had feedback from a list from one that I sent out and really appreciated it because. Even though, you know, it gets publicized, like, well, we just didn't know anything about it. Okay.
I would say too, the one thing I, I wish that we had more of, I know we had somebody at our office post at her church. It's a small church, but churches would be great because I think that. But, you know. Just getting the word out, people that may, you know, families that don't always have the time to come. We did have childcare. That we just in case, everybody took advantage of it, but um, we, we want to make that so that. I can get you there and get you engaged.
It's a bummer because we had a really fun activities for it. We'll reuse it.
I'm just wondering about the. Formating of that. I tend to like to like think and write things down like. And is it a way to be like sending a PDF or something where there is?
That's a great question. There, there is not on the form. But there is like a comment form on the website that's sort of independent and I can see if we can. Let them attach it. Yeah, you can absolutely do that. Yep.
Yeah, can I do that? I'll just put the, yeah.
Absolutely. Yeah. And if you sincerely, if you have other ideas about how to. Engage or get to folks that we're not hearing from, like we are all ears, we're like begging for that input. Um. I'm sure you see this at your meetings, like. Especially post-pandemic, like I think the appetite to engage has, has dimin- diminished quite a bit. People have busy schedules, people are. Working from all over the place. Um, and so. We're, we're trying to reinvent all the time, right? And there's some, like, we'll try some tried and true things, but they don't. Work in some communities, sometimes they're wildly successful in others. So. You're our best resource in telling us like, how does Livingston want to engage? And we can, we can calibrate things to, to try and optimize that.
Just to respond to that, I do think people have kind of shifted gears during the COVID. And, and they are typically lonely in missing the old days. And, you know, we threw a block party this summer and we had. Thirty-five, twenty people there and people were absolutely thrilled. To reconnect with their neighbors. And um, so. There's got to be a sort of a way to. Use that as sort of a way to get people to get together.
Well, how many, yeah, and how many people were you hoping would come last night? I was just curious and you know, did you?
You, you never know.
I know.
I.
I gave you a number.
Yeah, I mean, maybe this is embarrassing to admit. I like, I've, we, I've been in parts of projects. Since the pandemic that have had an event like we had last night and that we've had ten people show up and we had. Eight tables ready to go with exercises and. Um, and on the flip side, like, um, there's a town called Salida in Colorado that I've worked in, um, and are very, it's a different type of project. It's a more of a master plan project of. Um, a city-owned property that's undeveloped right now. So it's, it's a little more polarizing, I would say, than the downtown master plan. And our first kind of open house, which was a little bit more informal of an event, we were hoping for like seventy-five. The paper reported that we had like three hundred and fifty and the, the room was only capacity two eighty and it was like hack to the gills. So sometimes you get that curve ball, which is on one hand exciting, but on the other hand, people are like, I came here to talk and I don't have the way, I don't have the means to do it.
So there are upcoming a, a few, you know, turkey dinners. Community dinners. It could be an opportunity to put up a, some sort of a passive.
That'd be great.
Passive active button.
Right.
I like that.
Um, and get a, a part of the coterie of the public that is not. People that come to stuff normally.
Yeah.
But they'll go to that.
That'd be great.
And get a different, kind of get some different parts of the community.
Like some of your, uh, that you had on the easel.
The boards, yeah.
The, the boards, if you wanted to leave them.
Should be great.
For next week or something, or, or create a new one or whatever.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
But that's a, that is a good idea, Jim.
Thank you.
For, for reaching a different group of people.
Yeah, I really like the idea of the, cause I volunteered at the, the Legion or the Elks last year for the, the Thanksgiving dinner. I'm not going to be here for that, but there were, I mean, probably ten, two hundred people that came through there. I mean, it's, it's busy.
Yeah, yeah. And same for the Christmas dinner at the civic center. I think they're doing it again, but.
Yeah, you know, and then just thinking of, you know, I was there doing the Christmas.
Oh, the bizarre.
So we come up with some new.
Yeah, we can absolutely create.
And when I say we, I, I mean, you and Thomas.
You got it, you got it.
But it could be.
That's a great idea. Yeah.
Just to get some county people and other people that aren't always gonna come to meeting like.
And we may not even be aware of what's going on.
Right.
Absolutely. Yeah.
But, but it's so cerebral. You know, this is, this is like grad school. And for most people, I mean, they can't grasp it. Or whether they would have something to say about anything or what, or whatever. So there has to be a different message that says, you know, in simple terms, what's wrong with downtown? What don't you like about what's going on there? What would you, you know, real simple.
Yep.
I guess that's what I liked about your choice of eight pictures.
Yeah.
Because to me, the ones that were on the screen or maybe something a little bit different, um, was helpful to convey in two different ways. One by the words and one by the picture.
Yeah.
And that might be for the general, um, like the Elks dinner.
Sure.
Or something like that might, might make more of an impression than reading a long list of what you have done or what it means.
Yeah, because we're gonna have a plate in one hand.
Yeah.
And button in the other.
Yeah.
And you don't want to get many of those little dots.
Those are challenging, yes.
Well, is the, was the downtown, was the website simple enough for kind of the average citizen to be able to read through it and make some sense out of it?
I feel like it's very user.
I think so. I think it's user friendly.
Then maybe what you need to do at these, like these two dinners is like a stack of leaves, let's say, what do you, you know, some pictures and what don't you like? You know, is it parking? Is it not the right shops? Is it?
Or what do you like?
What do you like? If, if you wanna have input.
Mm-hmm. Well, you gotta do both.
Yeah.
I think.
Yeah.
But you, you can figure that out.
You gotta get them rather there. Don't look, don't count them and go home and do this.
Yeah.
Got to get them right now.
Yeah.
A little bit more to add to your plate, but.
That's okay. That, that's good. That's what we need.
So.
Okay. In the spirit of Thanksgiving.
And in.
Yeah.
Well, I think we appreciate the work that you've done so far.
Thanks for letting us work on it.
And the engagement you have had with our community because um, uh, I think it's, it's, uh, very worthwhile and gonna give us some interesting results.
Thanks.
And you didn't even have to say a word. Um, there weren't any other questions, right, on this? Okay, so, um, then on, next on the agenda, we have a brief discussion of possible consolidation of the planning board and zoning commission by the city manager. So you're up.
Thank you. I appreciate everyone's time this evening, um, as every time of the week. Uh, so the, um, city commission has had some conversations lately as we've reviewed our different advisory boards and committees. And, um, we are just kind of taking some, some steps to, um, you know, rationalize some of the parts of government, make sure we're, we're operating as efficiently as we can. And, um, to that end, we have, uh, looked at kind of the, the operations of the, the planning um, board and zoning commission here in Livingston and, um, there's, there's been, I guess, a, a few developments, um, and, and some other conversations that um, have, have really led us kind of to, to consider consolidating the, uh, zoning commission and the planning board's membership, um, to be a, a unified group. There was a a, a bill that passed the legislature earlier this year, uh, Senate Bill one thirty that, um, really made explicitly clear that municipalities could have, um, similar membership on the, on the two boards. Um, so long as the, the, it's clear, um, when, when the board is, is exercising which function. In kind of, uh, conjunction with that, we inherently have had some conversations with, um, a team from, uh, the, the state department of commerce's technical assistance program. Um, and, and they've done a, a brief review of our, our zoning code related to the girl's policy and um, and, and in those conversations with them, as, as we kind of prepare for a coming zoning overhaul, um, it, it's become a, a, a little bit clear to us that their experience actually is that many municipalities in Montana already operate under a, a consolidated, uh, land use board structure. And so um, it, it, it is something that, that, uh, as we move forward, um, and as I also reflect back on the past year um, and, and some of those very early conversations that, that happened when I first joined um, around gateway overlay districts and, and some of those others. Um, you know, I think planning and zoning are, you know, inextricably linked. And, and sometimes it, it perhaps is easier to have that conversation um, with, with one group of people rather than separate groups and, and trying to kind of bifurcate the issues. Um, a- and so, um, as, as we look forward, uh, to the update of the zoning code, um, that, uh, is, is called for in the growth policy and, and has been a priority of the commission. Um, and, and as we, um, also consider that the, uh, city commission um, a- approved of plans, unit development ordinance that, um, really, uh, i- is a new method of large lot subdivision. Um, uh, application consideration, um, that, that really does take elements of planning and zoning into consideration within each application, um, and, and does require consideration and, and action by both, uh, in, in both a statutory, um, planning way and a statutory zoning way. Um, it, it does, uh, for a number of reasons, I think makes sense for the, the city of Livingston to consider uh, again, consolidating our membership. So, um, a- again, the, the commission's had some conversation and uh, about the topic and, and seems, um, interested in, in at least exploring the idea. So, um, but before we, uh, really proceeded down that path in a meaningful way, I thought it would be prudent to, uh, come in and have a conversation with, with you folks who are the experts who, uh, who actually do the work day in and day out. Um, to, to see your thoughts on, uh, on, on the idea generally and, um, you know, if, if it's something that uh, that you folks would have an interest in, um, you know, just some, some considerations that, that you might throw out for myself and the rest of the staff. So.
I mean, I heard talk about this already and I, I'm inclined to think it's a great idea. But it would be very valuable to me to see if there's, you know, like a pros and cons kind of thing that other municipalities have where they were, the good parts of it, the weak parts of that sort of thing to make a cause I mean, I guess once we move that way is we're done, right? We're in, we're gonna, if we do it, we did it and it's.
We, yes, I mean, I, I would offer that, you know, a- anything is changeable in, in government, right? Um, and, and so if, if I, I'm certainly happy to give you the pros and cons with just, I'll take that one aside and, and, and answer that one for you happily, um, then make that for, available for everybody and, and, um, should be a good part of the analysis. Um, but yeah, any, any consolidation like this is, is undoable. You know, it's my understanding that actually we had a kind of a consolidated city county. Um, land use board, planning board of a few years ago that was, was separated. And so it just, it takes some machinations, but everything's doable. Or undoable.
I think Jesse, you have a a question?
I do, yeah, thanks, uh, Stacy and thanks Grant, um, for catching us up on this. I, I guess I have a question and then I have a comment or a request, but that was, that was my question. I, I thought that at one point the planning board, the city planning board and the zoning commission were together. But maybe I'm misremembering and it was the county and the city planning board were together, but I was it the zoning and the, okay, so I guess my question is, why did we, why did we split? Because I think it was within my time in Livingston, which is the last, you know, seventeen, eighteen years, something like that. Um, so that's my first question. Then my second comment, um, I know that there was a lot of changes in the legislature around planning in communities. And Stacy, I think we were going to try and get some education around that. So my comment is I'd love to have that education happen sooner than later, maybe in our December meeting, if possible, just to catch us up on the changes that we need to understand that happened at the legislative level.
Right. Um, Jim, did you have a clarification on the?
Here, I'm the old man, the group.
Yeah.
I was on the joint city planning zoning commission for maybe three years. Uh, before the former city manager or whoever decided that it would make sense to, to split into two groups. And I think I remember it was largely a legal question coming out of state statute, but I may be wrong about that. And I had mixed feelings about doing that because we had to choose as members which, where, where we're going. And I had interests in both sides of that equation. So I appreciate Grant, what you're saying about that the, the, um, the synergy involved in having both sides of these complicated questions at the same table together. Um, since that time, however, just being on zoning, I've found that there's a lot of sort of specialized expertise you develop on one side and the other. And so that is useful. But once you form a joint board again, you know, that sort of gets mushed up and watered down. Um, so I'm seeing that from, sort of from both sides. I think my biggest objection though, i- is, i- is, um, and I, it came from two words that you said at the beginning about expertise and efficiency. Um, and I guess what I'm seeing here is a, is a drive within the city government to get away from citizen participation. And the more ci- citizen boards we have, the messier it might be, but the more sort of like democratic it would be too. So I'm, that's sort of my, my main hesitation here is that you end up with consultants that come in here with consultants that came in with the growth policy and they got raked over the coals because they were from outside and they were making assumptions about this town that were, that were not true. You know, I've been around since the seventies. There's a lot of other people that that, that have something to contribute to this. And once you consolidate and you, you rely on expertise in a smaller and smaller group of people to make these decisions, the more other people are left out of the equation. And Lord knows there are, you know, the, the majority of people in this town are outside of this. You know, this process. You know, if you're a low income, especially working class, you don't come to these meetings. Your voice isn't heard. There's resentment about that. So I think we really need to be careful about that. How, how can we be efficient? How can we get to, to work down, make good decisions, but at the same time keep it as transparent and open as possible? And I, for a long time, thought that we should be meeting with the planning board. We've never done that. We've never gotten to know you. We've never sat in or in your meetings to see what your side of the issues are.
Right.
And we should have.
And, and vice versa.
And, you know, we should have been doing that and we haven't. So I think, you know, that's, that I'm seeing both sides of this as, as a possible, you know, as a possible move, um.
It's not an easy thing, I think, to figure it out. So you can see both sides of having two separate and you can see having them combined. Um, it's, it is interesting. I think it was about six years ago that the two boards split. It was before I got involved. So I've been on for almost four years now, so at least one or two years before then. Um, but I don't exactly remember the details. It must have been it's five or six, yeah, because Brian was. But anyway, um, and I wasn't privy to, you know, why it happened. But that notwithstanding, I think that a point that you're making is that perhaps in creating in, in looking at creating something, perhaps you don't just lump it all together. You try to create expositions for a zoning preference. And, you know, developing an expertise from, that you have certain people with that interest and certain people that might have an expertise or interest in the planning side, instead of expecting every single person to be an expert in both.
No, and I, I certainly a- appreciate that perspective, um, you know, I, there's a great number of municipalities across the country that, that operate with a, a combined planning and zoning board for a number of reasons. And, and, you know, I, I would point out, um, and, and there are some comments, if, if I could continue that, that I'd like to just kind of address, um, and kind of maybe dispel some, some myths a little bit. Um, but I would point out that quite honestly, the zoning commission tonight approved their meetings, uh, their minutes from the July, the June meeting. Um, there's been a number of times where we attempted to convene the zoning commission unsuccessfully due to inability to gain a quorum. And, um, you know, I'll note even as we sit here right now, uh, we barely have a quorum of, of the zoning commission. Um, and, and having this conversation, one would expect that that would be one that, um, that, that we would get a, a, a full membership of the board. So we have had some operational challenges and, and, and that's what I meant when I said efficiency. I'm not trying to block out public engagement in the, in the city of Livingston. In fact, I would offer, it's, it's quite the opposite and, and probably the, the, the business owner breakfast this morning is, is one of the, the best examples. Um, we've done a lot. We have, uh, the city commission, um, has, has taken action recently on a couple of their advisory boards and, and continues through that, that process. But let me be clear, that, that's for a, a very different structural reason. We had advisory boards of, of citizens, um, who were not elected, uh, who had the power to direct staff in the city. And, uh, that's, um, for me as a manager, that's very problematic that, that my staff have um, several different bosses that really aren't, aren't beholden to anyone else in the city. Um, it, it also kind of violates the, the Montana code of integrity. So it's, it's not really something that I, I felt comfortable moving forward with. And, and I think the commission shared, shared that view. So, um, you know, while, while other boards were impacted for that reason, um, I, I would say that, that this action here is, i- is very different. And, and i- if I'm being honest with you, you know, I've, I've been here for a, a year. Um, I think we heard very clearly from the consultants earlier this evening that, that housing is, is an issue here. Um, we've, we've seen a, a, a number of, um, people that have come in and, uh, worked to, um, develop housing in, in different ways. Um, and, and a, a lot of the, the, the feedback I get is that, uh, it's, it is difficult to, to do things in Livingston. Um, at times from a procedural standpoint. And so, you know, a- as an outsider, I can, I can genuinely say uh, over the course of the last year, it, it's my opinion that some of the ways that we do business has, has you know, led to projects either being abandoned or, or otherwise not pursued. And, and so if, if we are going to be serious about, um, the, the housing issue and, and making strides on that, I think the planning developments, uh, ordinance was, was a great step. I think the, the urban renewal agencies, uh, residential rehabilitation grant program was, was a great step. But, but I think there are some procedural things that we can do, um, to really ensure that, that we are responsive to the community and and, uh, you know, I, I, I guess I'll just leave my record of the last year for, for public engagement to, to speak for itself. Um, I, I think we've done more in the last year than, than people in the city of Livingston are, are used to under prior administrations.
Sam?
Um, yeah, that last point you made, that's part of the thing that I'm, why I'm interested in this is that the lag time between our deliberations and, and zoning commissions deliberations and all this, you know, back and forth and whatever, it just seems like a cumbersome process that I think that, that when we're all at the table with people with expertise that can provide the, you know, and enhance the discussion so that we can make a decision. Boom, here we go. Uh, instead of the, you know, the tennis match of uh, is just delays things and, um, for good or, for good or bad, um. So anyway, that's, I think that's one of the things that's attractive about it to me is just that. You know, that's like a more efficient use of all of our time.
Jesse, you have a comment?
Yeah, thank you, Stacy. Um, thanks, Jim. I kind of echo, uh, what Jim said about the efficiency, um, and combining them. I still would love to see the pros and cons list that Grant has offered to kind of, uh, create for us to take a look at. But my other question would be, what would it look like? How would, what would the process look like to, to determine who who would sit on the joint plant, you know, what? Who would sit on the joint plan? You know, what would the? What would the number of members look like and how would we combine that? What would that process look like?
Um, yeah, fantastic question. Um, so uh, SB one three zero that was passed. Um, stipulates that a consolidated land use board has a minimum of five members. Um, I, to be quite honest with you, I I probably um, would be my recommendation to to have more than five members. Uh, seven members feels like it probably would be a a fairly workable board. Um, you get into some issues when you get higher up in numbers and with quorums and whatnot, but. Um, yeah, I I I think ha- a a seven member board probably would be my recommendation. And then procedurally. Um, you know, the the city would open up a an application um, period. And and any uh, any person that meets the requirements, which in my mind would be simply just a a resident of the city of Livingston. Uh, would be able to apply and and then um, you know, would would go through a a selection process approval with the by the city commission ultimately.
So does that mean that? The the planning board would dissolve first. And the zoning board would dissolve first. And there would be a gap where there would be no none, none of those, neither of these boards. And then. It could take two months to create a new board?
No, I I don't envision a a gap in service. Quite honestly, if if it was the will of the commission to proceed in this way. Then we would establish, you know, kind of an implementation date that gave us ample time to um, post an advertisement, receive applications, review applications. And and go through the selection process. And um, I mean, quite honestly, we have a statutory responsibility to process applications that may come in in the time we matter. And so I, we couldn't have no boards for a a two month period of time or even really a month period of time. Um, because we could, you know, violate state law. So we would organize a process of of filling the the seats before the expiration of the other two boards.
And do you have a? Kind of an idea of what, since we're coming to the end of one year. Um, of when you were thinking of trying to put this together?
Uh, well, uh, you know, sooner rather than later would be the thought for a number of reasons. We do have, I believe, a few seats that are um, coming vacant. Uh, here in the next next several months. Um, and then we've got the certainly the new PUD ordinance. It was passed. There's a few weeks before it it takes effect. We expect there's, we're not going to get any applications in, you know, on day one. We might be wrong. Um, but yeah, I I I think certainly uh. If we're going to consider the issue, then I would say time is of the essence to at least have the conversation uh, with the commission about moving forward.
So are you looking from this meeting tonight for? A a preference? Or just for general input?
I I I welcome all of the above. Yeah. And and even, you know, things for us to consider, things that you think we might be overlooking, um, thoughts, concerns, um. Good idea, bad idea. I'll I'll take any feedback honestly, you know.
Well, then maybe. I was gonna say, then I'd like to hear from. Everybody who hasn't spoken so far. Nisha, you want to go ahead?
I was just gonna say. Prior to this topic that um, in our in our planning meetings, it's been. Frequently, we have kind of veered into. Zoning towards territory. They've had the realist factor. You know, planning and zoning, I feel like there's a lot of overlap, especially now with the PUD that's coming up. Um. So that's what I was gonna say.
And and do you have, uh, so you so you're saying that you think?
I totally understand that 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 we could be more efficient. We could, um. You know, there's a lot of times where I'm just like, I just wish that I knew what was going on with zoning so that that would help like. To me, it's like we spent all this time in on our planning meetings and then. We've kind of hashed everything out. We like the direction we're going and then, oh, well. Everything we've decided to, it can't be because of the zoning ordinance is like, well, we don't know this are because we're not the zoning board. So it's, that's been a little bit frustrating. As a member of the planning board, which that would not be the case if they were the two combined.
You couldn't get those answers from Jennifer? She knows what.
Yeah, but I'm also talking about during the time that Jennifer wasn't here and I mean, it's just. It's been a lot, but. It especially like, you know, with our subdivision reviews and stuff and then, you know, keeping us under like just our planning umbrella is sometimes difficult.
For our discussions.
For our discussions.
For for wanting to know some answers to something.
We wondered.
Yeah, I'm sure you have.
Like I said, they're inexperienced. We link.
Amy, did you have those?
No, I completely agree with Nisha as well. And I think as the newest member and the least educated um, on both sides. Uh, I agree every time we have a conversation. Uh, it it's helpful to have those zoning questions. Um. You know, be being able to have that. Zipper conversation, I guess you could say to to merge the two. So.
Okay.
And it is. It is cumbersome for Jennifer. If we're having a discussion and we have to stop. She goes through her stuff, finds what, okay, that and then we can go back. It is, it's just, it's just like Nisha said, it's. You're rolling along and then boom, hit that and that's not your purview. Got to go back to gym. You know, whatever. So that I agree wholeheartedly.
And and I would say it probably is most acutely felt on the planning board side of things when you're doing application reviews. It seems to me that yes, that would. Probably, I can see why you folks probably feel a little bit more.
And it could rein us in because you get this great vision. And then. A plan, a zoning hard board like, okay, let's get real here and we're gonna. This is exactly what we can do here. And it would be really nice to know that. Me before I open my mouth, you know.
So let's have Jonathan as our and Tori um, speak of planning and then we'll get the feedback from the zoning. So Jonathan, do you have anything you want to say?
Uh, yeah, I, um. I'm trying to think about um, this. I mean, I think that there's, I've been spending a lot of time thinking about it. Um, after the city commission meeting last week, I think. There's benefits to them being combined. There's benefits to them being separate. I was at the newspaper when they separated. So it would have been twenty eighteen or nineteen. And I remember a lot of the people being concerned about um. How well that work together, but then I also am concerned about just like the shared workload. I think I think that's one of the. Um. Main concerns I have is if we're gonna be doing a lot of stuff, is this, I mean, I think the planning board can be. A lot of long nights, especially when we're looking at subdivisions or looking at subdivisions for two months in a row or something. And um, I am a little bit concerned about that. Um, I also echo a lot of Jim Berg's concerns about fewer people being involved. Um, I think that um. That's just something that I'm kind of concerned about is fewer people in. Government and I think that and I think that leads to fewer, to worse outcomes. I think it leads to less people. Being prepared to. Do other roles like city commissioner and things like that. Um. I don't. Let's see, I think that the biggest concern. We've had about projects moving forward is. The planning board during my time on it. Um. Maybe this last one excluded is we haven't been put in a position to succeed by s- um, staff. I think that that's been the bigger issue is we haven't had answers to our questions. We haven't had. Um. Staff reports that met basic requirements. So I think that for if to think about like the developer angle, I think that's why we saw a lot of um. Denials in a row. And so I think that's one of the, so maybe this would allow, um. And that was before uh, Jen Severson was here and but maybe this would allow for more um. Staff time for the boards, um, which could be a benefit. Um, so I'm just kind of weighing lots of things. Um, I think that. My other concern was that um. The freeholder requirement, which um, the city manager said at the city uh, commission meeting, there's no freeholder requirement for the joint board. So I think that. I don't know. I have lots of different thoughts. I think there's benefits, but I do, I'm mostly concerned about. Increased workload and just fewer people being involved. Um, in decision making and that leading to worse outcomes.
Okay, thank you, Jonathan. Um, Tori, do you want to say anything?
Um. You know, I think that my role in this discussion is really to listen because I'll be part of making the decision on the commission. Um. Uh, but maybe like in that spirit. I'm hearing, I am hearing and resonating with everything that I'm hearing, um, and I'll like synthesize kind of what I'm hearing. Uh, on the concern side. And we heard this when it, when we were making this, we actually made some decisions about removing some boards last week on the city commission. And Jim, your point about uh, kind of. Reducing the opportunity for public input is something that we heard. Last week as well, and it's something that that resonates with me. Um. You know, my my route. To the commission was via the planning board and my service on the planning board. And so I, as a decision maker in the commission. I really value the expertise and and really the time and consideration that all the boards. Bring with their decisions that come to the city commission. Uh, you know, as a commissioner, as a volunteer commissioner, I have only so much time to do my own homework ahead of those decisions. And I am comforted in knowing that the boards have done a lot of that homework when they give us the recommendation. Um, and so. I I put a lot of value and a lot of, and I lean on those boards a lot and in my decisions on the commission. That said. I also see the efficiencies of of joining the boards. Um, and I agree that we've been to a certain degree like hemmed in on the planning board with our kind of inability to. Speak to like the regulatory side, which is really what the zoning commission is doing. Um. And so. There are limitations, I think, to having them separated as well. Um. So I I'm not saying anything new and I'm doing my best to kind of in in a short amount of time, kind of uh, synthesize what I'm hearing. Um, and I don't, I don't have anything new that that you all haven't brought up and I'm taking good notes and intend to. To uh, take this all into consideration and we.
Okay.
If we make a decision on it.
Thanks. I'm gonna call on Shannon and but before that, um. When we say, I think we need to clarify that when we say we didn't get the information that we want from the zoning. I kind of, it's not that Jennifer didn't tell the planning board about. Zoning rules or information. But it could be more like, well, that's a decision the zoning has to make. You know, and it's in that context. It's not that. We didn't, um. Um, you know, just. She didn't say anything. So I just want to clarify that, that it was, she always was able to say. That's a zoning issue or that's a zoning question. So um. When when we were feeling hammed in, you know, so.
Well, both Grant and Jennifer.
Yeah, both.
Come to our.
So it wasn't, we're not blaming.
No, no, same on our side.
You know, we weren't blaming. So, okay, good, good.
It's a planning thing that should be.
Yeah, yeah. So I just wanted to clarify that. Um, Shannon, did you want to say anything from the planning board? For the planning board?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, you know, I've thoroughly enjoyed my time on the planning board. Um, have nothing but. Uh, positive things with the members I've worked with over the. Last uh, five to six years. Uh, I do think this is an exciting opportunity to combine both boards and I I can certainly understand the efficiencies. In a a combined board and. All I know is there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of work ahead for whatever structure we move forward with. On both the planning and the zoning side, just. Growth policy implementation and. And um, just trying to stay ahead of legislative changes uh, made at the state level. Uh, it's a lot of work, but I have the full confidence that we have a a great group of citizen. Uh, interest in this and I think a a board of seven individuals that look at. Planning and zoning. Um, I think we can be successful and I guess I'll go back to Grant if 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 it's something we try. For a year or two and and we. Find some challenges with that. I think, you know, it could always be revisited. So, um. That's my two cents.
Thank you. Okay. Um. And I'll just say that I think that it's it's probably worth investigating. For efficiency and for cooperation and and understanding of both pieces. It will be, I think. A lot more work, but then on the other hand, there's times when the planning side of things is. Not happening. And then there's time when there's things that the zoning is not happening. So. That maybe because of that, the two pieces can coexist without overburdening. I do kind of get a little concerned about the overburdening of the the. Committee. But, okay, so let's hear from planning, I mean, from zoning. Michael.
Yeah, and and to your point of overburdening, when we, when we split, I was, you know, I've, I've been a little original member, genuine original member. And one of the things, one of the main reasons why we split in the first place was because of the. Workflow that was seen out there on the horizon, you know. Um, the growth plan was, wasn't finished yet. It was gonna be finished and we were working from a. You know, chapter thirty, which is just very, very old. And it needed, it's been needing this overhaul for a long time and. Um, it, you know, it's, it's, it's. Not even forced to finish. I mean, I would say that in some ways, we really never started it. Because uh, we've been given certain tasks to accomplish. Over the years, we've had personnel changes. We've had. All kinds of challenges to just really begin the process of overhauling the zoning ordinances. Um. There's things written in there that just don't even make any sense today at all. And we haven't gotten to them yet. So. Uh, overburdening one group of people, yeah, it'll be a burden for that one group of people. Um. Do uh, uh, have to spend the time that's going to be needed to spend to get this right. So that's, that's a concern of mine. Um, I've I've heard now that I got right that there are certainly these um. Meetings where. With joint group is needed. Um. I I can see that. I understand that. I think maybe. There's a workaround possibly. Uh, you know, to explore at least is, you know, when we have. Subdivision situations where we, you're right. I mean, they had to meet with you and then they had to come meet with us and. Then we had to go back and come back again and, you know, it's one month later and then another month later and then another month later. And uh, we've experienced that and it it uh, it is inefficient, you know, so. Is there a way to put the two groups in the same room at the same time, have one meeting? I don't know what's allowed exactly as far as that goes. I know that there's a lot of. Crazy rules out there in statute that. Might allow and might not allow something like that from happening, but it sure would be a lot more efficient, you know? Um, there's my two cents. There's those, there's my two main concerns, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. And on the online is Deborah?
Yeah.
Deborah?
Hi there. Um. I guess I would just echo a lot of what everybody has said already. Um. I think it could be more efficient, but I don't necessarily think it will be as thorough. Um, getting to Michael's point with an overhaul of the zoning code. Um, just thinking about our meetings. And grappling with the information and getting to the point where you can understand something. Um. It would take our group, you know, a meeting or two or three to get to the point where we could make a recommendation sometimes. And so I guess I'm wondering how you. Um, have one board that needs to be thorough uh on a zoning, from a zoning perspective and then also. You know, deal with the uh needs of a, of of the planning board. So I, I guess I'm worried about the workload and thoroughness that a co-board um would have to deal with. Um, yeah, that's my main concern and also I guess, um. I guess just to say, our personal experience, you know, I joined, I think I, I don't know, I've been on the board, I guess, a couple of years and. Were right at the beginning of COVID and I felt like we, at one point, had a groove going where we were getting staff reports. And we were engaged in um making decisions and that was really exciting. And then we lost staff and the pandemic happened, um, and I feel like we've kind of lost our footing since then, um. And so I, I guess I would just in some ways feel disappointed that we didn't have the opportunity to get our footing. Back up and going, um. I don't know. That's it.
Thank you, Deborah. That's, um, uh, everybody's input is important, so.
Ask, um, is it not true that there is going to be a consultant assisting with the overhaul of the zoning?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I was going to kind of point that out. I, I think that, you know, if. What, regardless of if the board is consolidated or not, that whoever is making the zoning, statutory zoning. Um, recommendations up to the city commission is going to have very ample support, um, all throughout the process. I mean, we've got internally and externally, um, you know, I, uh. Neither here nor there, but the city manager's administrative assistant position's been repurposed into a policy analyst position. Who's been supporting us on housing and land use issues, um, we've got a, a return in the planning department, so, um, we've got more. Staff internally that is focused on, on zoning and planning issues. Um, and and so adding that with the, the consulting team, I, I think that the, the zoning commission will be well supported in their work, whoever the membership is.
So the burden would be somewhat lifted off of having.
Yeah, and and a- absolutely, and and I do think, you know, there was a valid point here that I think the, the chair made. Um, kind of concerning, you know, the ebbs and flows of, of, of work. Um, you know, I, I come from an environment where, you know, we were doing um eighty million dollars of residential construction. And eighty million dollars of commercial construction a year and we had an exhaustive design review project process. So anything that wasn't a single family residence was coming for that consolidated planning and zoning board. And and we were, you know, taking all those applications and running those as well as, as doing the, the updates to the, to the code. Concurrently with a group of five P and Z members, um. Sometimes there is some, you know, and I don't want to overuse the term efficiency, but sometimes there is some benefit from, from having. You know, one, one set of eyes, you know, the, the, the folks that hear the applications, you know, I actually think that those people are pretty well positioned. To opine on, on revisions to the zoning amendments because. Um, you see how, you see how applications come in, you have the conversations with, with the development teams and. And kind of know what the project constraints are in the real world and so to have that experience informing. An update of, of the zoning code, I, I, in my experience, I've seen that to be a very powerful combination.
Okay. Are there any other comments that anybody wants to make on this or any other questions for Grant or? Back and forth? As everybody said what they want to say, Tori.
Uh, I'll just share that, um, I'm, I take this decision very seriously. Um, and I like, you know. You can look at attendance at commission meetings to see what the big issues are in Livingston and land use is a very, those, when we make those decisions, those are very well attended. Um, and that indicates to me that the community really cares about those decisions. And because the community really cares about those decisions, that means I want us to have the best input that we possibly can have on those decisions. And I, I'm just sharing that this is very serious, um, and I can. I think that because of my service on the planning board and my background, um. I have some cachet when it comes to land use decisions on the commission, um, and I've heard you all. Um, and we will, I will be taking this decision very seriously.
Hi, Jim.
Maybe I'll see another couple of remarks. Um, and I'm totally ambivalent about what direction this is going. But this question workload is, is kind of crucial to it. So when the zoning board was established. We, we actually were able to set our own agenda. And we actually have had like this huge list of things that needed to be done to chapter thirty. And, um, we worked our way through some of it. Uh, our format retail, I think was probably the biggest project we did, um. And as Deborah said, we got, we got in a group and, but it was a lot of work and, um. We had good staff support. Um, but then since we've had a transition of staff help and a transition of city manager. And our work during that has just disappeared. Like in, in the last six months, we've not had a bunch of meetings because. There are no land use map amendments uh for us to look at or any text amendments for us to look at. So any of the sort of rewrite of the zoning ordinance issues, and we had those on our plate. At one time and they, and they were taken away from us, so at this point, we don't have a lot of things on our plate as far as I. Know, so it sort of depends on how the city, and it, you know, handles the workload. If, if that's what zoning is going to do from here on out, then I think a joint board could. Could accommodate that as long as, as long as staff is doing a lot of the, the heavy lifting of. Reanalyzing this segment of the zoning ordinance, doing the research on that, making the recommendations. And then handling the process. So that certainly is one way, way to go about doing.
And that brings the question to mind, so this consultant that is going to be helping with the zoning regardless of where or how. Um, is that a position for a year or is that, how long will that person be involved?
So, um, great question. Much like the downtown master plan, the city will do a request for proposals with the specific scope of work. Which is, you know, to review and then um provide recommended text amendments after, you know, public input process, this, that and the other. Um, so that we'll have a, a scope of work that's defined and also a period of performance that's defined. We do expect that this is probably at least a twelve month process, um, so we will plan for that. Um, but yeah, we'll have a scope of work that actually will come back before, before the zoning commission in one form or another. Here probably very shortly because actually last week we just met with the, the um tech, community technical assistance program consultants and so. Um, yeah, we will, we'll have a team and and just to be clear, more than likely it's going to be more than one person, probably we'll be a consultant too.
And is that enough help? Because we have, have known that the planning department has needed more help. And so is that enough help to get the zoning? Enough help for that portion of it to, to make it work? In other words, we don't want to just be, I think, Jim's point of, um. With, within all the transitions, sometimes the system, the system has changed. And the city definitely has taken on more responsibility for, um. Background information, I think, than what maybe in the past was given to committees. So that's, that's something that everybody's had to adapt to. Um, so I just, I just wanted to clarify that there is going to be enough for both departments to make it work.
Yeah, no, I, I really genuinely appreciate your, your concern as I'm sure Jen does for her workload. Um, because yeah, the, the last thing we really want to do is, is burn anyone out and, um, you know, I, I guess. All I can really offer is that I have sensed a large amount of support from the city commission. For uh land use issues and staffing and staff capacity related to land use issues. Um, you know, I, I think that the, the level of staff we have now, um, especially with, with. Taking the city manager's assistant position and putting that more into a policy role, um, I, I think we've, you know, supplemented and have more planning staff. Than probably we've ever had in the city of Livingston at this point, um, not that, that, that other position and a half are, are, you know, dedicated planners. Uh, but, but they're pretty good staff support there. Um, so I, I think we're in a good spot. That said, as, as Jen and I get into the budget process, uh, we'll be happy to um make the request of the city commission if, if we think it's necessary.
Amy?
Sorry, I, I kind of wanted to go back to, um, what Jim was saying and I, I guess I guess more of a question. Um, again, my experience on the planning board is very limited, um, and since I've been on it, the staff support has been amazing. But again, I've had a very limited uh time, um. But my, my, I would go to the other Jim's point, kind of having a list of pros and cons of combining the boards. Maybe I'm hearing a lot of talk about overburdening prior to pandemic, but again, in my limited capacity. There hasn't been much of a burden at all and I'm kind of hearing the same from the zoning board as well. That there was a time where it was overburdened, but now it's not, so maybe kind of a compile a list of. What's on each board's plate at the time, like, so how we can weigh, like, really what is the burden? If we should combine the boards, if that is a concern. Because I, the concept of kind of combining everyone's knowledge sounds fascinating to me, but I understand that overburdening as well. And again, I don't have historic knowledge to be able to say, oh my gosh, you'd be so overburdened because again, in my timeframe. It hasn't been a burden to be a part of. This board.
And, and thank you, I, I think you've really actually hit on something, you know, I, I alluded to, I, you know, I come from an area where, uh, where, where land use. Um, actions and decisions have come, come fast and furious, you know, I've, I've been here twelve months and, and Jen, please correct me if I'm wrong, but. My recollection is we've had two subdivision applications and two special exemption reviews that have run through the planning board. I know, but there was actually the one that you did handle, that Jim handled last December, that was uh North Town, so.
Oh, that was.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So really in the last twelve months, we've had basically four land use approvals that have, have come through. Um, and so if we, you know, just. Very raw here, if we were to just take ten meetings or so a year, you know, or excuse me, twelve means a year because one among. Um, you know, a third of those would have taken, been taken up by, by land use considerations if the entire media was dedicated to that, leaving the other two thirds for. Um, you know, zoning considerations or, or other work. So it, from my standpoint, it appears manageable. Um, but, you know, and, and I, I guess I would also offer, you know, one part of, of this really is to. Um, you know, I spoke about expertise is, is really to, um, you know, kind of ensure that everyone has, has some real solid training. Um, not only on kind of parliamentary procedure, um, but also on, on MCA, you know, statutory land use requirements. On local land use requirements and, and really, um, you know, just to have, I would, I would say five citizen experts on, on planning and zoning.
Any other comments? Okay, then we'll move on.
Thank you for your time, thank you.
All right. We're gonna move on to uh board, board comments from both boards. Um, does a zoning board want to go first? Board comments?
Uh, other than it's really nice to meet you. Most you, I know, I don't.
We should introduce ourselves too. Why don't you start, Amy?
I'm Amy Shilling. I'm a very new member, as I said, so.
Tim Berg, Mike Watch Black, this was, I'm still, the Chellis, Michael DeChellis here.
Okay, and you know, Jim. So I apologize for not having done introductions, plus we have Jesse Wilcox, Jonathan Hedinger. And Shannon Holmes and Deborah.
No, it's been, it's been like many, many, many times when I had wished that we. We medicated more with you and besides, you know, certainly personally could have come to meetings if I had liked going to meetings. But we would have been better for it if had we done it.
Um, Deborah, did you have any comments you wanted to make? Board comment?
No, I just echo what Jim said. I, I too have often wished we could meet in the same room and, and hash some things out, so. I'm happy at least we're doing it now.
Could I have Michael pronounce his name once and for all for all people here?
And spell it too.
Yeah.
I can spell it.
How do you pronounce your name, Michael?
It's really actually pretty simple, you know, break it apart. It's Watch the Lack.
Watch the Lack. Thank you so much.
It's the first word I learned how to spell.
You're a good speller.
Some phonetic there.
Um, Shannon, I think you had, uh, I had asked you to give a staff report on kind of what you've been doing in public works?
That's my fault, Shannon. I, um, I left the pronounced at the office, so I'm gonna email them to you all after this. Um, because he sent it to me today and I had to leave and I wasn't able to go back and forth, so.
Okay, Shannon. Well, Shannon, do you want to just verbally then go ahead and?
It's pretty extensive.
Is it? Well, summarize. Get your top five areas.
Is that a request or a? There's a full page of things that we're working on right now, um, things are very busy in the public works realm. Um, we've had four pre-construction meetings in the last couple of weeks, um, we have, as of today. Uh, the, all four of those projects are under construction in various parts of town, um. Including R Y Timber or the Sun Mountain Lumber property, uh, Love's Lane. Uh, Garnier and All Spa and uh the Home to Suites Hotel. Uh, we've yet to have two pre-construction meetings, uh, one for the Fairgrounds Water Main Extension uh on View Vista. And the other would be the Lama Lane uh duplex project that's actually in the county, but they are connecting to city. Water and sewer. Well, thank you, Jan. I appreciate that.
I just made your top longer.
You can't read.
Putting the finishing, putting, putting the finishing touches on the regional sewer project, which we, you know, have a hundred and sixty homes. That were previously on septic systems, um, connected to city sewer, um, as of now, we've had close to sixty. To seventy of those homes make connections, so that's good, um, per the city commission, they have till the end of April. Of next year, twenty twenty-four, to make that connection, um. Looking at value engineering on the, on the CIP project that's in the alley between Main and Second Street. Uh, FEMA projects are ongoing. Really, I, I guess, if, if folks in the room have a, have any questions on any of the projects. I have bullet pointed on the sheet, I'd be happy to, to answer them briefly.
So what does it mean by Dan calls development, construction is substantially complete? Does that mean the infrastructure for the streets or the actual structure?
Um, the water and sewer mains have been uh constructed and tested and approved by the city. Uh, to my knowledge, there's a small asphalt patch in Montana Street that would be the last order of business for that project.
Okay.
Uh, been working with uh several of the trailer park communities, um, those that. Know View Vista community was annexed into the city, uh, week ago Tuesday, um, we started garbage, garbage collection. Uh, for that community uh today and working with them on CBDG grants and state revolving. Loan money for water and sewer main extensions, which um are estimated at around two point seven million dollars. Uh, North Town Phase Four A. Uh, North Town Phase Four A, uh, has been postponed till the spring of twenty twenty-four. Uh, working with MDT on two, I think, significant projects for our community, uh, looking at, uh, doing rapid uh, flashing beacons for pedestrian safety, bicycle safety at three locations, uh, Park and Main, Geyser and Park and Highway Ten Bike Path Crossing. Uh, a big one is our urban project on, uh, doing a utility improvement, street scape project on Montana Street from Seventh up to Eleventh Street. That's just at its initial planning stages and probably will not be in construction until probably twenty twenty-eight. Um, the ARPA project, the ARPA Bucket B, working with the staff at, uh, the DNRC on getting that project moving forward, um, with an agreement and design contract. So hope, hopefully we'll be, be starting on design for that for in the next, uh, month to two months. And then we get into our discharging, uh, requirements through DEQ with the copper mixing zone study and then, um, putting the final touches on the adaptive management plan. Um, planning board members know that, uh, I, I represent the municipalities that discharge less than one MGD on the nutrient work group. And I'm also on the governor's water pollution control advisory council. Um, so we'll be voting on that plan in, in mid-December. Putting the finishing touches on our stormwater PER, uh, that will be, uh, that will, that was, uh, mostly paid for by, uh, a Mon- Montana Coal Endowment, uh, planning grant. We're in the process of of applying for, uh, another planning grant through the Montana Coal Endowment Program, uh, for a regional water project that, uh, would, uh, include Green Acres and the Montague subdivision, uh, where we installed sewer mains this year. And then we get into a lot of the flood, uh, projects I'm working on, uh, partnering with the county on the river channel migration, uh, study. Uh, working with the Corps of Engineers DNRC on the, uh, breach analysis, the section two oh five program and then, uh, the floodplain mapping. So there's no lack of work on my plate right now.
No, I would say you have a full plate. Understatement. Where is the, where is the RV, RV dump station being built? Or what was that on there somewhere?
So that ironic, ironically, that's the only project. So, you know, that's the only project that, that's, that's, uh, kind of the operation and maintenance responsibilities that my staff and our department have. But, um, we're excited to promote and, and get that out to the public that we are installing an RV dump station. It's gonna be at the three thirty Bennett Street location, um, uh, at the old drive-through, uh, when you could, well, would, used to be able to pay utility bills at the drive-through window there. So that, that's a good location, uh, right near the sewer main and, um, security is not gonna be an issue there hopefully and, and, uh, that'll be a service that we can provide to not only city residents, but, um, the traveling public as well.
Well, thanks for putting that together, Shannon. It's, it's kind of daunting to see it all in one place listed like that, but, um,
It's daunting for him to list it.
Yeah, I think it's daunting, um, but appreciate all the work that your, you and your staff have been doing to, to work on all these things. And so, thank you.
Well, every one of them is gonna make our community better and that's what keeps us, keeps us motivated.
Right, right. So is there any other board member, Jesse, Jonathan, anybody else want to say anything from the board? Can't release, oh, there's no hand.
Oh, well, you know, Stacy, I'll just say thanks. Thanks for a great meeting. Um, I appreciated being, uh, introduced to the zoning board and, uh, good luck, Shannon. Talk about workload.
And I wa- I was just, uh, comment that I have is wondering about December. And being that it's the end of our year, um, the, the meeting is scheduled as of now for the twentieth of December, which is five days before Christmas. Um, and instead of, I recall, I recall last year that we canceled the December meeting, but um, Jennifer, I didn't know what you had planned and if there was time then. Cause I do think we need to spend time on the legislation, um, and the impacts from the legislation, which we have asked for in work.
With that, I would just say, um, I'm not gonna December right now. I will send out links to everybody. Those, um, are not, anything that was necessitated by the state legislature is not going to the zoning board. It is, um, we don't have a choice in it. So it goes to the city commission as
Oh, it doesn't go to the planning board?
It doesn't go anywhere. It, it is, it is state mandated. You wanna?
Yeah, I was actually just going to say, just, uh, there was a lot that was passed by the state legislature, but there was not a lot that impacted the city of Livingston. We're happy to report. Yeah, I, SB three eighty-two, if I got that number right.
No, that's when we're not.
No, exactly. That was the big one. But that actually only, um, impacts counties of greater than seventy thousand population. And so we actually have a draft of that ordinance, um, prepared and I can tell you really there's Yeah, yeah. Um, and so, uh, one is to, um, uh, basically we have to allow duplexes anywhere. There's a multi-family home allowed, or excuse me, a single family home. We cannot require ADUs to have an off-street space. And and there you go.
Changes on, um, the allowance for the size of ADUs.
Yeah, exactly. So they messed around with.
There's, there's, the, the state has, has dictated the size of ADUs and it's a little bigger allowance than what we have.
When we were at eight hundred, right?
Yes. And so it's a little bit, it's based on like seventy-five percent or it can't be more than a certain percentage of the primary or such and such. Yeah.
It's seventy-five percent of the primary or a thousand square feet, I believe is, is max there.
It's pretty much gonna be the thousand square feet.
Yeah, I, I, I will say there is, um, you know, kind of one area, um, of, you know, maybe a little bit of policy consideration there related to the ADUs. Um, because now under state code, ADUs are allowed everywhere, you know, with every single family house by right. And that is what the bill says with every single family house. However, a, um, a plain reading, uh, of the, um, Livingston Municipal Code actually allows an ADU for every primary unit. And so now that a duplex is allowed wherever there's a single, technically under our code, you now are allowed two ADU units, right? So really every single lot in downtown Livingston now can hold up to four units, right? For two, two primaries. Plus the, yeah, exactly. Plus it's a double and then that's an apex, um, that could conceivably go on there. And so really what this is a function of is that Livingston's code, um, was, was fairly progressive with regard to the ADUs and, and how they were allowed. The state has kind of caught up to that, but because of how our code was written, it actually appears to take us into a place that wasn't necessarily contemplated by the zoning commission or by the city commission. It seems like when they, um, made that decision to allow one ADU for every primary. And so that's really the only potential area of, um, of policy discussion. However, when we, you know, kind of again, do a, a plain language reading of, of the bill that was passed, it, it is pretty specific that it's allows, uh, an ADU for every, you know, everywhere a, a single family is allowed. And so, um, that, that's one that, that we would have a, a discussion on with, with the commissioner.
And the duplex. So a single lot, thirty-five per square feet.
In R two.
Anywhere.
Anywhere.
Yeah.
That's not a single lot anywhere. That's not, that, that's, that's a minimum lot size in R two. In R three, it's eleven fifty.
But, but down, down, downtown, thirty-five hundred square foot. You're saying that they, they are now allowed to put a duplex on that lot.
As of January one, a duplex.
As long as they need setback. I'm all for it, actually. I like the idea.
The added level auxiliary allowed for every primary is
And there's no hiding.
There is no hiding, exactly.
If I, if I can add, add a little planning perspective to this. Typically, A, ADUs are really a, a planning tool that's usually applied to areas that are already developed.
Right.
So like the, the way that the market would be likely to respond to that increase isn't gonna, it's not gonna be like there's gonna be a bunch of duplexes and then two ADUs put in because you can't fit them and, and also ADU really makes more sense as a retrofit to an existing structure than it does if you're developing, developing from scratch.
No, I, yeah, I'm real surprised by it.
So did you ask for clarification on, on that? So that there was, and, and did you get a response?
As far as clarification on, on what's
On the, the, you know, putting more on than what our current code allows. In other words, the two ADUs or a duplex?
Well, on, on January one, absent any changes, a duplex and two ADU units will be allowed on a single lot.
And if, and that supersedes anything in, in local ordinance?
So i- it's actually, it's a combination of the state change and the local ordinance. So on January one, a, uh, a, a duplex would be allowed anywhere that a single family house is allowed and every single family house would be allowed to have an ADU. The, the company, combination of the laws are silenced, and these are state laws, are silenced on ADUs allowable with multi-family units, with multi-family dwellings. We get that added layer of complexity from the Livingston Municipal Code, which specifically states that any primary structure or unit is allowed an auxiliary structure or a unit. And so our, you know, again, just kind of common sense reading of that is now anywhere a duplex is allowed, it can have those two ADUs. State law allows duplex, local law allows the ADUs. And so that's, that's really kind of the one area of, of any, you know, kind of wiggle room that we have here.
But what I was going to tell you is, is, is just, it's, um, I think rather than discussing it here beforehand, to me, it makes the most sense because it, again, anything that is mandated by the state or in what you were just talking about is going through. Um, my plan was to email you, um, is it gonna be on this commission, this next one?
We were going to have the policy discussion.
So I will make sure everybody has that link and I will send you the agenda. And I would just say, watch that because the discussion of what that means, I think is a lot of it's gonna come up during that commission meeting and will probably answer a lot of your questions.
Okay, um, so that brings me back to, um, is there any work to come before the planning board for the December twentieth meeting?
We do not have any subdivision applications in right now.
So is it safe to say that we will not have then a reason to have a planning board meeting on the twentieth?
The only reason I could think of would be to work on the annual report or anything like that. Or if you would like some other educational outreach or educational component, but I think we kind of covered a lot of what you were looking for maybe here. So I, as the city manager, don't see any need to meet or force a meeting on the twentieth of December, but
Okay.
I'll defer to the members of the board.
I'm just gonna check with Jesse. Jesse, did he answer your questions or was there something else that you were interested in?
No, that, that worked, uh, Stacy. Thank you. And I'm, I appreciate Jen sending out that, uh, information so we can just pay attention. So that's perfect. I'm, I'm good.
I've been trying to notify, um, and, and when I, when there's things that I think that you would be interested in, I've been trying to send out for you guys. So that you can watch that. That's the whole kind of thing. You don't have to be there in person. Zoom is an option. That way you can do your laundry and
Exactly. Well, um, then we will just officially say that the December twentieth meeting is is canceled.
Is that good or do you wanna?
I mean, I'm, I'm asking, is that okay with everybody else at this point?
I can promise there won't be a subdivision because no application has come through. We haven't done any pre-apps, so.
And it's more for planning purposes because people are starting to plan for the holidays and just to, to know what you have, um, coming up. And that's all. The only reason I'm doing that is just
Should we get together and have a Christmas party on that?
Yours is the twelve. We don't have any zoning changes and the reason why we haven't brought a lot is because we know we're doing this major overhaul. So like when we did the cleanup, that was trying not to really change the intent of everything, but to clean up some of the language. When you say that there's things that don't make sense, you're not telling us anything we don't know. Um, and a lot of that is because things were spot fixed. And so we're kind of trying to as much as possible, I mean, the PUD ordinance was one we wanted to get moving, but trying to funnel it all into that one big overhaul with a consulting team, which this is their specialty. This is what they do. So that's, right now, I don't see anything coming forward, but I
The, the only thing I could offer would be, you know, just the conversation that we just had, you know, my inclination is because there is a little bit of policy sprinkled on top of this, you know, in these state changes. You know, ordinarily, we would have just taken ordinance with the state changes right to the commission. Yeah, so there, there is, there are some that are very, very clear. There is this one issue that's maybe a little bit less clear. So my intention, I don't wanna get ahead of myself, but on the coming city commission agenda, I was going to have just a policy discussion with the commissioners um, to get their feedback on, on again, that ADUs with duplexes, um, now. And so that would be something that potentially would come before zoning in, in December. Uh, just because there is a provision in the Livingston Municipal Code that, that we should take all text amendments to the zoning commission.
There is one other, um, state law that affects our zoning. Um, and it actually went into effect immediately as soon as the legislature, uh, finished. Um, and that is the, um, five or more residential units in any commercially designated zone. So, um, it has to be multi-use. But if you are now, and, and the, the biggest place this makes a difference, but it is a very small area of zoning district would be neighborhood commercial. Right now, residential is not allowed in neighborhood commercial in those tiny areas that are designated zoned residential commercial. If somebody wanted to come in and build a structure that had commercial on the bottom or offices and at least five residential units on upper floors, they could do that by right. That is the state law.
Thank you. I was trying to figure out why I messed with these, or the abuse matrix.
It's, it's, it's honestly, I, I think that new neighborhood commercial is the only one that's the key difference because right now we do not allow residential development. So that's the only kinds with this change that we would allow. So a single family residential is still not allowed by rights in that zone, but, uh, five plexes or with, with mixed use in the bottom. Yeah. There is very little.
I would say probably where that change is more impactful. I know there's been some discussions about the appropriateness of residential and highway commercial area. And this basically nullifies that conversation to a large extent.
Yeah, well, residential is allowed right now.
No, I, I think there was some talks about amending the, the use. That is allowed and, and that actually is, is off the table at this point.
Okay, well, um, you guys, I guess can decide whether you're gonna meet or not and, and if you need to do it later.
If we, yeah, if we can see, because if we do want this to move forward and I'll, I'll, um, I will know that pretty soon. And like I said, I think that we'll know that after the next commission meeting.
I was gonna say if we can catch up with you next week, that would be great.
I was also just wanting to know if this moves forward to do a joint, um, board. How much notice will each board have? So like, is this potentially the last planning board meeting? If so, I'm gonna say, thank you, thank you, thank you. Or is this going to be that, you know, we will actually be planning to meet again in January, I'm just trying to get a sense for how, especially now that we're saying we're not meeting in December, so.
I'm gonna have to meet to dissolve.
Yeah, no, I I.
Well, it's more of a personal thing, like, you know, kind of.
We will, we we will, like I said earlier, if it is the will of the city commission to to consolidate the membership of the boards, there, you know, that it would be ordinance that would take two readings, and then we would have an application process and and kind of that review and that seating process and and the training process as well. So I I would have a hard time seeing how this board, either of these boards' functions ceases before January's meeting.
Okay. That's.
If somebody.
We'll see you again.
But I would say also just if if I, like, I know of one person on on zoning that indicated they were gonna end with this term, I think as long as we have a majority that are still there, then we can keep moving forward with anything that comes before.
Yeah, and and I, like I said, I I think if we're going to do this time is like the essence for a few reasons, not least of which, it's most respectful to you folks, our citizen volunteers who serve on the boards, I don't want to leave you twisting in the wind and and just are we aboard or we not aboard, so, you know, it's my in- intention to have the conversation with the commission in an expeditious manner, and and we'll move forward yes or no one way or another.
Okay, thanks.
The agenda will be out Thursday, posted, is tomorrow Thursday? Um, yes, so I will send you a link to the webpage that has the agenda packet and all that stuff, and it'll have the Zoom link, so.
Okay.
I will send that out with the project list as well, but we were just looking at.
Thank you. Well, then, I don't think there's any further business, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.